The Dyker Heights Civic Association, please stand up for the pledge allegiance. And pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. We meet every month on our annual meeting, but we are having our candidates debate today. So I'm going to dispense with the reading of the minutes for the last meeting, and I'm going to dispense with the presidential reports of the movements of business of the evening. But before I do that, I introduce myself. My name is Fran Russell Marone, I'm the president of the Dyker Heights Civic Association. I do want to make a couple of business announcements before we start with the presentation. First of all, I have to nominate a... well, I'm going to appoint, not nominate. I'm appointing a nominated committee. And I'm appointing, Ali Sade was the chairman, Ali is the chair, right? And her committee is Joanne DiLaglio and David Carr. So that's the committee, and they'll come next month. At least they'll come next month and give a presentation on who the candidates are going to be.
It's Amy, it's Dan, it's Amy.
Yes, we're enjoying it there. That's fine, so I need the chair. We have Joanne DiLaglio and Sandy Valas who are on the committee. The next meeting, we will have nominations for offices for our next year. And I need you to present what the committee has come up with. So thank you, Ali, for chairing the committee. Also, we have our fundraiser coming up. On October 26th, Thursday, October 26th, to Rico, starts at 7 o'clock. Always a good time. If you haven't come, please plan to come this year. We have some invitations right by Ali. Ali, you have invitations over there. So if you haven't got an invitation...
I have a lot of apps tonight.
If you haven't got an invitation and would like to have one, please take one. We also have a journal. And if you can't make the event, we'll certainly take a ticket out of the journal. But try to come to the event, it's actually a very nice evening. If you want to bring a friend, if you're bringing anybody, simply get aside the room, it's no problem. But we do have one of our honoraries here tonight, Lauren Wiggins. Lori. Lori is also representing Congresswoman Nicole Mouta-Taxi tonight. Thank you, Lori, for being here. And we have Chris Paul Staley representing Alfred Jackson, Senator in the back. And we have former Senator Peter Body in the back. I hope I'm not missing anybody, I hope not. We also have some raffles. Ali, what are the raffle prizes?
The prizes are, first prize, $1,000. Second prize, $750. Third prize, $500. Fourth prize, $250. Tickets are $5 a piece, five for twenty. One of Oregon, especially if you win. And if anybody wants to take some books, or go down to dinner, or make something tonight, come see me.
Thank you, Ali, thank you.
Anything else to add?
Thank you, Ali. So just so that you understand, this is our one fundraiser of the year. So whatever we raise in this fundraiser, we use for the entire year. So, you know, this is it. This is the one time we raise money, one time we're asking you for money. So if you have to become a member, please consider becoming a member of Dyker Heights Civic Association. We meet every month except for July, and August, and January, and February. But we meet ten months out of the year. And we have two activities throughout the year. And I'm sure you might be interested in some of the activities, and some of the events that we do, and some events that we do support. So if you're not a member, and you'd like to become a member, please see me after the meeting, I'll be happy to take your registration to be a member. And if you'd like to come to our dinner and support us, or support the journal, we appreciate that as well. Okay, so that was what we're doing. I'm going to introduce John Alexander. A well-known journalist and novelist, who in the past few years has been moderating these events. So an eternal leading to John Alexander. John, thank you so much once again for being able to do this, thank you.
I am honored to be here today to moderate this forum. And I want to thank Fran, Dyker Heights Civic Association, for inviting me to participate in this. I do enjoy it, and hopefully we'll get some information, and have some nice discussions with some of our candidates. It's very important to hear what they have to say. And hopefully the less important questions, you get to hear them. So, here are the rules. Each candidate will have four uninterrupted minutes for their own statement, three minutes to respond to the questions I ask, and three minutes for closing remarks. There will be no questions taken from the floor or for time constraints. Tonight's candidates represent four districts that include parts of Bay Ridge, Dyker Heights, city council districts 38, 750, and also Staten Island, Beaches, a lot of different areas that are represented. And we focus on the issues that are especially pertinent to these particular districts. We ask the candidates to focus on the questions. We're going to be very anxious to hear what you have to say. And we ask to answer them as best we can as precisely and formatively as possible. And I don't have to... this is always a great group. Please keep it simple, dignified, respectful, so that Dyker Heights can show everyone else how this is done, and you always do. So this should be just another enjoyable evening to each of these candidates. So, the first candidate is running for city council district 50, which covers a large swath of Staten Island along with parts of Dyker Heights and Bath Beach. David Carr is a Republican conservative. He's a lifelong Staten Islander. He attended my senior feral high school in Staten Island. And he holds a BA from Georgetown University. His first role in the city government was as chief of staff to then-seniary member Joe Borelli. And then he served as city council member Stephen Mateo. We'll invite Mr. Carr to come up here. So here's the first question. And you can, you know, just... Yeah, do your own thing, I'm sorry. Do your own thing, a statement, and then just answer your questions.
Thank you so much for having me on this call. Can you hear me?
No.
How about that? All right. Well, getting to everyone, I want to thank the Dyker Heights Civic Association, in particular Fran Russell Marone, the president, for having me here today and John for moderating. I came here last Christmas, and it's just myself, the whole, you know, representing the Staten Island base this year for almost two years now, since my election in 2021. The district is now wanting to grow to cover parts of Bath Beach, Dyker Heights, Dyker Beach course and Park, as well as Fort Hamilton itself. And so, this is kind of a homecoming for me because my mother, like so many Staten Islanders, is originally from Dyker Heights. She grew up on 79th and 10th. Her mother grew up at 12th Avenue between 77th and 78th Street. So I've been coming to this neighborhood my entire life. I'm going to be privileged to represent a part of it that has been a home base for my family since the turn of the last century. So my focus is going to be, as it has been these last two years, on improving the quality of life, block by block, intersection by intersection. I want to be in the front line for all of your quality of life concerns, but also being a standard bearer for common sense of the city hall with some of my colleagues, like Joe Borelli, like Joanne Arriola, and others. And trying to stand up to support our police, not defund our police. We want to make sure our men and women, including the resources they need and the headcount they need, as well as making sure that we can push back on some of these radical proposals that are seeking to raise your property taxes, to cut services to you that are essential to you in your lives, and instead spend $4 million to run migrants like the administration is doing. These things are wrong, and these are the things that I want to keep going to the city hall to fight against.
Mr. Carr, you made public safety, I think you're part of your campaign platform. Please tell us how you would address the current rising crime. I know you just rose to a crime rampant throughout the city, especially in regard to the areas in your district, which are a little hard.
Sure, so I think that on the sort of macro picture, I think that we have to focus on improving the NYPD headcount. When I ran two years ago, I called for an additional 6,000 officers over five years. Commissioner Sewell, when she was in that role of NYPD commissioner, committed to hiring 1,500 net in her first year. And she fell far short of that, not because she didn't want to or didn't have the budget, but because recruiting for what is really the best police force in the world has become so difficult because the job has become next impossible. So to me, I'm going to be working as closely as I can with our precinct commanders. I had a great conversation with Captain Shaffer earlier today. I'll be speaking with Captain Lau of the 62 later this week. And letting them know, only a roll call is letting them know that I'm going to have their backs whenever they need me. And that it's important to reach out to other communities that have now come to the city in their home and realize the same thing that many other immigrant communities realize a century ago, Italians, Irish, Germans, and so many others, that there's a place for them in the civil service, and in particular in the NYPD. Because we need to not just rely on the family network of police families to come and take the test, but also reach out to the folks and get that recruitment number higher so we can fill our head.
Thank you. And I just want to say, Mr. Carr has read our post, so he really did take the time and cover it just to share his views with everybody. So thank you. Mr. Carr, with same feeling, I feel a theme of news very much so lately. Please share with us your views on our issue, how it affects, directly affects your district.
Sure, so we've had five migrant shelters open up in District 50 to date. That's just the Staten Island portion, you know, none in southwest Brooklyn so far, thankfully. But I think that what's so critical about the bill case, and I was very personally invested in this because I went to the bill for first really great, is it was an opportunity for us to knock back on this ridiculous notion that the right to shelter extends to people who just got here days or weeks ago. The right to shelter, when it was agreed to in 1981 by the city, by Merkach, it wasn't meant to be open to every person around the globe. It was meant for New Yorkers. And that's how it should have been interpreted when this crisis began. And thankfully, in the court decision where I and other co-plaintiffs, residents and elected officials from the area, were able to get a court to agree that the right to shelter does not exist as an open-ended commitment to everyone. It's only for folks who have, who've been living here, and New Yorkers, they're already at their home. This is a reason for, for citizens in the mayor's office, don't appeal this case, use it. It's the very ruling you're looking to get in the Callahan consent decree renegotiation. And it's going to free us up from this open-ended commitment to the migrant crisis. So I believe the bill decision is the key to getting us out of this hole. And it has to start now because we'll already too deep into this.
Thank you. Moving on to another topic, with the struggling economy and modern pop shops all across Brooklyn, Staten Island, the city, you know, suffering right now. How would you begin to remedy this situation? We're losing a lot of those students, students that are really part of that, we're completely over losing them.
Sure, so I think that there's a couple of pieces here. I mean, first and foremost, I hate to be the same John Russell Marone, but it's Staten Island, and it's public safety, right? You can't survive as a modern pop small business if people are afraid to come to where you are, if you're constantly having products sold from you by people coming in and out of the building, if you feel like the police aren't going to be there when you need them. So that's first and foremost, and that ties into the public safety question. But I think the city could be doing a lot more to support small businesses, particularly in the area of lending. There's a lot of federal and state subsidized lending operations that end with loan forgiveness at the end of them. The city doesn't do a lot of that, and I think that's something that we need to look into more because I think a lot of businesses are on the cusp of success. And if they could just be given a little bit more help, that would go a long way too. And then the final piece is, many of our business owners, particularly here and the rest of the district in Staten Island, are owner operated. They're fortunate enough to own the building where they live, and yet they're still struggling. And so, let's just go back to the whole question. We have to reduce property taxes. We have to reduce property taxes at base.
Thank you. And last question. If you have to look at it all, what do you view as the most pressing issues? Or actually, I'd say the most pressing, yeah, the most pressing issues affecting your particular district at this point in time?
So I think unfortunately, the migrant crisis has reached a proportion that is affecting every district around the city, and it's number one issue. Besides having the five shelters and God forbid there's any more. $4 billion a year, over three years, $12 billion of your tax paid dollars, mine and everyone else's, going towards folks who have no connection to the city other than that they showed up with a port of card and a custody box on board, and then they were sent over to the Roosevelt Hotel, and then they were given a place to stay, and they were given free healthcare. And if they had kids, they were put into other schools. And if they need to get to their doctor's appointment, they're given a MetroCard to get there. So literally everything is being given to them, and virtually nothing is being given to those who are here. And so, we heard the other day that there's a 5% pay, which basically means the mayor's asking the agencies to find 5% of their budget to cut in order to make room for all the spending on migrants, and a further 10% next year. So while agencies are trying to figure out how to do their core missions, and are relying on overtime budgets because they can't step up, they're being told they can't hire, and they're going to have to cut their overtime budgets. So I would love to ask the question, at what point are they going to start asking agencies to even access folks who are already working in the civil service? How many essential services are going to be compromised? Police, fire, sanitation? It's unacceptable. And that to me is of the utmost importance to District 50 and to every district in New York.
Your closing for?
Sure, well, I want to thank everyone again for coming out, and towards coming out of the room more often as we get closer to the start of the new term. As I mentioned, I already have met, or will be meeting the CEOs from the area, and then with Commissioner Mar, Parks Department, and I'll be meeting with our other colleagues here who serve in helping Dyker Heights and Bath Beach and the rest of southwest Brooklyn. Such a wonderful place to live, really. And doing all I can to improve and maintain the quality of life that you have and that frankly you deserve to have. So I'm always going to be here on the front line, so I'm going to be coming back with my staff, and we're going to do everything we can to leave those stone terms so that you get what you deserve from the city of New York because you're certainly paying for it. And I just want to make your voice stick off.
So, we had the candidates, we invited the candidates from District 43. Sunset Park, Bensonhurst, Earl Park, and Great Ten. District 43 is a newly redrawn district that has no incumbent council member at this time. We invited Susan Zhang, she's a Democratic candidate, but she declined our request to participate in the debate. We invited King Tan, who was the Republican nominee, and she declined our request to participate in this forum. But we do have Vino Lebal, who was running on the Senate line. Mr. Lebal, he's a veteran, he's a veteran, and served as an NYPD police officer and NYPD lieutenant. And was a nine eleven first responder. So, Mr. Lebal, please, if you're coming, and also if you're in Congress.
So I'll leave a few minutes, we apologize. Thank you. Thank you. I'll leave a few minutes, and let's get right through this. We need to discuss why I'm the only one standing here tonight, why none of the other Dems are here. And well, that's because, let's be honest, they think they have this in the bag, right? They do. They think that they only hurt themselves by debating, and it's not fair to you, the voter, answering that question. Right, so straight up, Susan, you know, she doesn't want to answer why she said during COVID-19 that she was in Brooklyn and had an PPE, when in reality, she was in Virginia, oh, they have. Hey, nothing wrong with that. I was isolated in Massachusetts with my 90-year-old mom, and as well, I still fulfilled all my volunteer responsibilities as a community education council member, as a school leadership team at Brooklyn Tech, and as PTE president over at 197. Right? Maybe Susan doesn't want to answer why she said that, well, I really have GOP values, but because Bill Colton is a Democrat and he's sponsoring me, I really need some heart reader on this Republican. Well, guess what, to hint some baseball here, the Democrats, the other Democrats, they don't like Bill Colton, and they don't like Susan because they're too conservative. So guess what? Have some heart, have some soul. If you believe that conservative solutions to the problems in our community are the right thing, and we know they are, then do what Amika did, switch sides, and come on over. Would love to add you, honestly. And they, Susan, are good people. I work with them, I did some advocacy with them on migrants, on schools, on other things. So listen, they would be more than welcome in the Republican Party, it's hard against them. As for Ying, why isn't she here? Well, she and the individuals who she's with in our team, they lied, they cheated, and they engaged in some questionable financial expenditures. I mean, if you lived in 43 during the primary and you were Republican, you got all these negative matters featuring me, I know. And they were full of lies, misrepresentations, and mischaracterizations, okay? And also, she claims that in 2018, she was an advocate for GNT. But GNT wasn't an issue in schools until 2020, 2021. There was an issue in 2018, it was a specialized preschool, specialized preschool admission exam. And there were lots of rallies, and lots of protests, and lots of protests. And I know because I was one of the organizers. I was at most of these rallies, and I don't remember seeing her, okay? There's no social media or photos of her from 2018, and Andy B. Foralis. And if not, she says she's a community activist, but there's no record of her doing anything before her campaign this year. And as far as other ways she lied, she cheated, well, she and her team submitted 1,000 13th team pad signatures to get on the third-party line, the parent party. And the people who wrote those signatures are intimately involved in the campaign and are getting money. So they have a financial interest for her to stay on the path when, if she didn't win the primary revocate. And that person signed a penalty perjury that those signatures were valid, when in fact, they were not. And again, full disclosure, I was on a medical freedom party, and I got kicked off, but I only had $350 instead of $400 signatures.
15 seconds.
Okay, thank you. But guess what? There's some financial similarities, and God forbid, this person gets in. If they're enriching themselves now, what will they do if they get elected? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lebal, you've stated that if elected, you will work to maintain what you call education standards currently under attack throughout the city. You will also voice your support to expand if-in the talent program and provide parents with the choice of better charged schools while trying to ensure that special needs children get the education they need. Please explain your stand on this issue and how your position differs from your opponent's.
Okay, so it's really easy to say that you're for this or you're for that. I think positions are comparable. So if the positions are comparable, what do we look at? Well, we look at knowledge, experience, and temperament. I retired from the NYPD in 2017, and I really, I didn't intend to get involved in activism. What happened was, is people in the education community who are helping needed help because these things are under attack by the previous administration. And so I got further and further down the path of all, running for the Community Education Council, running for state senate last year in the 17th district, which is pretty much this old area, the 43rd. And I can bore you to death with the minutia of what's going on in the public schools. I could talk about fair student funding, and how people get extra money for migrants or for multilingual learners, for kids in poverty, or for kids with temper loss. And where this money goes, what can you do? But I don't want to put you all to sleep, I don't want to see your eyes rolling in the back of your head. And I also have institutional knowledge of the New York City Police Department because I did 32 years in the police department. So the thing is, is that when I'm standing in tweet building, and they try to do a tap dance, I can call them out. And I will call them out because I've been doing it for the past six years. I have the knowledge, the temperament, the experience to represent District 43 and South Brooklyn on this issue, and frankly, on all the other issues as well.
Thank you. And as you just gave, you're a former NYPD officer. I spent 32 years on the force. You have made law order a pivotal part of your campaign platform. You had said that you were tired of career politicians and extremist organizations destroying our city. With people walking into our Oklahoma pop stores and chains like the R.I.A., who are all greets and clearing out the shelves, and just with no ramifications or repercussions, as a retiring NYPD officer, what would you do different to help make the streets of Brooklyn safer?
Well, you have to call it out, right? So we know our head NYPD captains, our CEOs, they're on the hot seat every day. They come and they talk about how crime is up or crime is down, and they're talking about index crimes. Again, institutional knowledge. Right now, the things that are making the community feel unsafe are not the index crimes, but the quality of life crimes. They're smoking marijuana, walking down the street. They're, like you said, the pet larceny with impunity. They're the homeless individuals who are on the streets and in the subways that are not getting help. We need to reform, we need to repeal all of the anti-police, pro-crime policies that the state council enacted. We have to do it, thank you. For example, pedal reinforcement needs to go back to the police. Police outreach needs to go back to the police. Let the police handle it. You know, when you try to change unit behavior, you need the carrot and the stick. You know, we have people that are living in boxes, and they're here day after day after day. They're not going to get help unless they get some tough love. You got to say, you got to go to a shelter. You can't stay here, you can't live here on the sidewalk, you have to go to a shelter. You've given every opportunity, you take them to a hospital, you give them a value, and when they come back, you have to say, listen, you're violating the statute. You can't have a cardboard box here. You can't defecate on the street, you can't defecate. So if you continue this behavior, you're going to get arrested, and you have to follow through. Everybody needs tough love, when they're talking about students, fellow citizens, or anybody else's behavior you're trying to change.
Thank you. I have a quick question. What is it about the conservative party line that appealed to you, that you would run on this now? What is it about the conservative values that especially appealed to you?
Well, listen, I never, I, my stance on any position has been consistent for the last two years. And I, the conservative party gave me an opportunity to spread the message and to compete in this arena. I promised the conservative party that I will voice their concerns specifically. You know, I agree with Mickey Haley on the abortion issue, for example. She said, we're talking about six weeks, we're talking about 12, we're talking about 15, we're fighting on this end. What we should really be saying, most people of good faith, most people with common sense know that we should never be aborting healthy, viable babies in utero. Should never, never happen. And I will voice that concern, it's a big concern for the conservative party, and I promised them that I would give a voice, and I And I'll start a voice here and I'll continue to voice it going forward. My word.
Thank you. You've been an outspoken advocate for small businesses, small business owners who have been struggling post-pandemic. How can we help save these struggling businesses? I know since this question was up, but I think it's a very important one. It's really basically wearing our hat for our community. How can we help these struggling businesses that are being forced to close from lack of workers and paying higher rents?
Well, David Carr, when he hit all, when he hit all icons, we got to reduce business regulation, the order. We have to really incentivize owner-occupied buildings, whether it's, whether it's our rental buildings or it's our business owners that own a building and are trying to run a business. We have to give them tax incentives. We have to reduce regulation. And we have to give them support any way we can, including if you're a retail establishment, not allowing people to come in and, you know, strip the shelves like Locusts and, and get away with it here.
Thank you. You closing the bars?
No, thank you. So listen, thank you for coming tonight. I do want to thank Fran and my civic association, John Alexander, for hosting. Thank you so much. Applause, it deserves it. Going forward in the future, I believe that if, if a candidate wants to receive matching funds, they should be required to do one debate in the primary if they haven't voted, and at least one debate in the general. You are the voters, you deserve it. The taxpayers are paying for it. We got to make this happen in the next round. All right, Kim is handing out some swag. She's got a vote veto bag.
It's not that impressive, really impressive.
It's not that impressive.
My friend has been 10 cents at the grocery store.
That's right. We'll save you some at the grocery store. But listen, inside that bag is this cool QR code. If you scan it on your phone and put your email address in, what you'll find is it'll pop up a video where you can ask me a video question. You don't want to ask the video question. You could text me a question, anything you want to know that John didn't get to, and I will get that to you. It's a really cool app. It'll also direct you to my website, my social media. I urge you, look at my social media. I believe in integrity, transparency, accountability. I never screw up my social media and I never will. You go back to 2008. And if I had a different point of view in 2012 or 2020, that's because I learned, I learned from talking to people in the community because that's what a person should do. Talk to people, find out what's best, find out what's working, and make adjustments. So shout out Kimberly for her instinct for designing this product. What's my time? I have something to say.
You got a minute?
I have a minute. Oh, I have a minute.
Minute thirty seconds.
You can have a minute. Go ahead, go right there. So listen, when I started my community and education advocacy six years ago, I began down a road where I met some incredible people. Incredible people. People that stepped away from their comfortable lives, from accomplished careers in the private sector, to take up volunteerism, to take up activism because they weren't happy what was happening in New York City. So I tell people that no matter what happens in New York, I'm still going to be around afterward. And I can make that promise because I am proud to announce that my audio and video podcast, Vio Labella: Fighting for New York, debuts this Thursday night, October 12, on Spotify, Apple Podcasts, and YouTube. I urge you to find it. And the first two episodes is me talking. Now please say, after that, I will be discussing with some of these great fellow activists who are getting involved. We're going to discuss the issues that impact New Yorkers and the things we want to do to change what's going on in this city, to bring New York back just a few years ago, 10 years ago, when New York City was more business-friendly, was safer, was cleaner, and was better liked. So thank you. I will, thank you, thank you. Early voting, October 12, January 17. Election Day number seven. Please get out and vote. This is a super low turnout here. Send a message. South Brooklyn will not be ignored. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, everyone, so good.
So we're gonna, we're gonna take a short break and give everybody a chance to just, you know, chat for a few minutes when we'll, is left? Oh, and, and is there a call for the jury?
We're losing the schedule. So our next candidate hasn't arrived yet. So we are going to take a little bit of a break. But I just want to make mention of something here. You're wondering why we have four districts here tonight.
Jerry Maney.
Right? So there was a commission that basically took that act and split it into four districts. So we're no longer in one district, we're no longer together. We're represented by four different people. So I may be in one district, Joe may be in another district, you know, Dan might be in another district. We're scattered all over. That is a shame to take a community and split it up that way. So I should say that, want to mention that here tonight, that should never happen, but it did happen. That's why we have four districts here tonight. Yes, Jerry?
Fran, is it true that if you're on 76th and 10th, 76th and 10th Avenue, you're in the Sunset Park district?
Yes, I'm in the Sunset Park district.
And you're saying that the Democrat socialists, because she and that was a Democrat socialist from Sunset Park, one of the people who ran the rally at Times Square is looking to represent Diker Heights?
That is, that is correct. The council member that's representing the district right now, a council member of Vio's, is the Democrat socialist. She supported that rally that happened in Times Square. She supported that organization that promoted that rally. And that, that's concerning to me that I live in a district that can be represented by somebody who promoted that. It's really a problem. So Jerry's right. We couldn't help but that represented us here in Diker Heights. But you have a choice because the next candidate that's going to come after our break will be the person running against it. So there is a choice. I'm not advocating for anybody. I'm not here to be an advocate for anyone. But just to make you aware of the situation. Yes, Jerry?
I'm sorry to take up so much time, but I did look something up. Since New York, if you guys, since New York City was created in 1898, Diker Heights has always been in one council or ward. So always been in one council in what? Over 125 years. Diker Heights has either been in one council district or one ward. Could you be a little more specific about exactly what happened?
Well, I mean, what exactly happened was, as Jerry said, over 120 years, we were one district. Now it's split into four. I mean, what basically happened is they gerrymandered the district. This commission that the city put together to draw the district lines to the city council basically gerrymandered the lines. And frankly, you know, the representative who was representing that district before and is now running for reelection in the, one of the gerrymandered districts, never spoke out when Diker Heights was split up.
But it's serpentous.
The present council member never spoke up. He wasn't concerned about Diker Heights being split up. So somebody obviously wanted us to be gerrymandered for because they don't want Diker Heights to have a voice, a full voice. I'm saying that for a reason. It's imperative that we understand what happened here. We were split up on purpose. They did not want Diker Heights to have a single voice because with a single voice, we have power. And that's the real, that's the real tragedy of this world.
Can you look at that one block connector down 82nd Street? That's the 47th district. That's my district. That's a hallmark of gerrymandering. When you say, I'm going to create this long, long connector to connect two groups that I want.
Now, it's true. You're 100% right. They have that 47th district that has one little line in Diker Heights. It's got two blocks connecting two other areas, which is really a shame because you know what's going to happen? We hope that we can get the representation that we deserve. I hope we do. But I'm concerned that we won't because we won't be represented by one person. We're split, we're split apart, different districts. And we're only going to be a small part in each one of those districts. And you know what happens to the small parts of each one of those districts? We get ignored. And I'm hoping that, I hope that doesn't happen. I hope that the people that, that are running and get elected, you know, are true to their word and represent us. You know, I, I hope that's the case. I really am hopeful.
Fran, I just wanted to ask, is there a way to undo what they have done?
No, there's no way to undo it. It's done, it's done. It's done. Okay, we're going to take a little bit of a break because we're, as I said, a little bit ahead of schedule. And we have two more candidates coming. So don't go anywhere. Just have a cookie, have a bottle of water, and we'll be back. Thank you.
So, we have a candidate from District 38. District 38 is Red Hook, Greenwood Heights, parts of Dyker Heights, Windsor Terrace, and we're a part, also includes Greenwood, Senator at Sunset Park. We, uh, city council member Alexa Viles is running on the Democratic Party line. And she was invited to participate in tonight's forum, but never responded. Paul Rodriguez is running on the Republican Conservative line. Mr. Rodriguez was awarded New York, earned his BA from the University of Georgia, and also enjoyed a career working in nonprofit development. Mr. Rodriguez is here, and he's going to join us. And can you please give us your opening remarks?
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving the opportunity to address you today. As I always mention, my name is Paul Rodriguez, and I am the Republican Conservative Party candidate for city council here in the 38th District, which by the way, includes where we are right now. We are actually now in the 38th District. And until not too long ago, this area was, I believe, represented by Justin Brennan, but now it is represented by a lady named Alexa Abiles, who is a member of the Democratic Socialist of America. But mind you, she's not a liberal. She's not a progressive. She is a die-hard, dedicated, true-believing socialist. So much so that she's one of the few people who actually, I believe, tried to defend the DSA and their support of these rapists relating to what's happening right now, the Hamas attacks in Israel. But anyway, let me tell you a little bit beyond what you've heard about myself. You may have actually, some of you may have heard of me because last year I was the Republican Conservative Party candidate for New York State Controller. So I was part of that team, that statewide, George Slade, Lee Selton, and also, as you know, Michael Henry and Joe Pinn. And in fact, since corruption is one of the major issues we were tackling last year, I was traveling to several areas with Michael Henry, speaking to people here from the Port of the Attorney General's Office and actually from the Controller. With the redrawn of the districts, I now found myself no longer in what I guess is the 47th, but now the 38th District. But in many ways, I have a better profile for it in this way. I am Puerto Rican. So is my opponent. She was born there, raised here. I was born here initially and then raised there. And then moved to Atlanta, Georgia, and then came back here as an adult. Uh, she grew up in East New York, lived in Sunset Park. I lived in East New York, lived in Sunset Park as well. And I've been in Brooklyn now for at least about 20 years within the Bay Ridge-Dyker Heights area, and then of course Sunset Park in East New York. One of my main issues, public safety, which has been an ongoing thing now for a few years. You know, it was a big issue on the statewide campaign last year. And in fact, if you speak to people in Sunset Park, they're talking about how bad things are getting. Now mind you, Sunset Park has never been, uh, an easygoing kind of a place. It has history of rudeness. For them to say, "Things are getting really bad." You know, it's bad. And not too far from here, in fact, where my youngest daughter goes to school, there were a couple of people beating up a young Asian kid. And I'm not talking other students. I'm talking only an adult who had basically that. This is what we're seeing in a place like Dyker Heights, where people come to see the Christmas lights, where people marvel and awe at the wonderful neighborhood that we live in, the quality of life that we have. But what we're seeing is public safety in decline. We're seeing the deterioration of education by getting rid of merit-based, uh, merit-based education. They want to get rid of, they want to open the specialized schools to, uh, high schools and middle schools to a lottery. Get rid of the S H S A T. They want to get rid of the gifted and talented programs. And basically bring standards down. And when that happens, you don't bring anybody, you just make everybody get worse. We've seen examples of that in New York, or what happened in City College when they did open admissions. And then of course, the other aspect is the quality of life decline that we're facing, not just for the rise in crime, but issues such as the migrant crisis. And not because any of us, I'm sure, is in any way in compassionate towards migrants and doesn't want to help them. But because it is a situation that's entirely mismatched without any input from the people that these elected officials are supposed to represent. They need, their job is to look out for our interests. And you can look out for many people's interests, yes. But you prioritize the interest and the concern of the people who actually elected you. And as I'm sure you're all aware, if you try to voice any kind of objection, express any kind of concern, say, "Hey, oh, by the way, what you're doing in the 38th District, which is largely immigrant, either directly or the second and third generations," they're saying, "Hey, I'm in the region too. My people came not just from across Mexico, they came from across the world, whether it's China, whether it's Eastern Europe, whether it's Africa, or other parts of Latin America. And we came here, we didn't have any carrots, peanuts, apples, or else of benefits or things to do. We came here to work, or we came here illegally." And now we're being told that if I voice any objection to you taking away our public spaces, to you putting unvaccinated children into schools, and I'm not talking about COVID, I'm just talking even measles and mumps. But we're getting rid of that. You expedite work permits ahead of people who have been working here for years, who have been still waiting to get permanent work visas, who came here legally. You're telling me that if I voice any objection or concern about that, then I'm racist? I'm a psycho? Then I'm hateful? I'm a bigot? And we don't know that's not true. But that's what our elected officials want. Because all they can do, they want to hide their own complicity in their incompetence in dealing with this issue and in enabling it through the rapidacy of open borders and having sanctuary city status for New York. But all they can do is blame it on Washington. And it's true, Washington has failed in this. In large part because President Biden, out of spite and impetuism, wanted to reverse everything that his predecessor had done. Not necessarily because it was ineffective, but because it was done by that person, and I'm not going to do anything that person does. That's sort of the state of the country. So let me just stop right there, and whatever questions you may have, I appreciate you calling, thank you.
So, your opponent has supported the same national efforts to reduce the incarceration of juveniles and adults. What is your solution to deal with rampant crime in the community and for criminals being set free on the streets after committing crimes?
Okay, one of the major problems that we've had is that I actually support not trying to put so many juvenileous in jail if the point of view is to give them better opportunities to improve their life and to deal with the problems before they get worse. But that doesn't mean that we turn a blind eye to crime and we try to de facto decriminalize so many of the things we're seeing, such as shoplifting, doesn't seem to be a crime, obviously, terrestial jumping, things like that. One of those quality of life crimes are broken windows crimes, which is what during the juvenile era, they implemented the broken windows policing to say, chances are that the people who are doing the petty crimes are also perhaps committing even greater crimes. And we're seeing that people get arrested now for pushing someone onto the tracks of the subway, or trying to rape someone, or doing something else. Many of them have been arrested 20, 30, 40 times, and then were just let go. So we need to get rid of this whole notion of the cashless fail. We need to move away. The idea that you're going to defund the police, I find quite absurd. Uh, and like my opponent says, it would be wonderful if we could take $3 million that we give to law enforcement, maybe hire social workers in every school. But you know what? When the subway shooting was happening in our district, in Sunset Park, I don't think social workers were going to do anything to prevent that or to help save lives. And when just recently, that person that was responsible for that shooting was, uh, they, he was found guilty and he was, uh, given 10 years in jail. It didn't even register. She didn't mention anything about it. To her, the police and crime are things that are out of her mind. Out of sight, out of mind. It's not water for major concerns. And if you look at her phone cards, she doesn't even mention crime or public safety. So I think you definitely need to prioritize public safety, get rid of these policies that are facilitating crime. And you do need to go after petty crime as well, because that petty crime often turns into larger crimes. And the whole idea, for example, that you can walk down the street, and most of us, I don't know about you, but even before the pandemic, I didn't use to carry more than 200 bucks on me of cash that much. But now you can carry up to 500, anyone come up to you, and they don't do anything. You know, they consider these crimes a property. They don't realize that a lot of the victims of these crimes are all supportive, right? And now with post-pandemic time, where people even have less cash, you're basically saying, "Open season on every individual walking down the street. Anybody can come after you and lock you for 20, 30, 40, 100, 200 dollars." Nothing's going to happen to them. If they get arrested at all, they're just going to get sent right home. So.
Thank you. How is your background, both working on Wall Street, the Wall Street firms, and also working with nonprofits, benefiting, becoming a member of the city council?
I believe that one of the greatest, I guess, skills that I got, middle of living in New York, working in Wall Street, and just in sales in general. I always say people in New York are always pitching to everyone that sales, whether it's of a policy, whether it's to a donor, to a company, to a funeral, whether you're just simply trying to persuade someone, it's all about relationships and generating trust. And I believe that that skill of talking to people, being exposed to broad cross-section of people, companies, entities, different industries, different situations, and both in the private sector and the nonprofit sector, I think are very related in terms of power, you have to deal with a lot of people of all types of backgrounds, all types of interests. And it's all about connecting with those people beyond just what your job title is, but about establishing rapport, building relationships, and generating trust. Because that's what you get anything done, is to get people to trust you. They don't trust you, doesn't matter how smart you are, how rich you are, how good-looking you are, you're not going to get anything done.
Thank you. All right, so this, a little bit of a time of question. Regarding the current city council's, uh, bill to remove statues of prominent historical figures, including Christopher Columbus and founding fathers, George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, how would you address this issue and what's your view?
I think it's ridiculous. And I'm talking as an history lover of history. You can, trying to judge the past by today's standards is completely foolish. It's a loser's game. Because you're never, no one from the past is ever going to be able to live to our current standards. In fact, 100, 200 years, people may look back at us and say, "What a bunch of barbarians people were." So trying to do that is ridiculous. You cannot erase history. Plus, keep in mind that there are no sacred cows in the past either. We just went for the Columbus Day, which I'd probably say, "Happy Columbus Day." I say, "Look at all those Italian-American elected officials who gladly will march to the Columbus Day parade, but then will wish everybody Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day." Let's look at even Happy Indigenous Peoples'. If you look at history dispassionately and objectively, the fact that someone may have been one of the, you know, part of Native American or indigenous to the area doesn't mean that they were necessarily wonderful and rural people, any better than the Spanish, and the English, and the Portuguese, and the French. If you see the things that the Aztecs and the Incas used to do to their own citizens, much less to their, uh, their enemies, all of our cultures have things that we, that are, that we can object to and that we may not be proud of now. But that's our history. What we need to do is, with our history, take the essence from the past, learn from them, and become better people going forward. And again, understand, 100 years from now, 200, 300 years from now, we're going to hear people saying, "My God, those, those broken ashes, those real statues." And that knows how the standards will be passed. Who knows? We may think we're very wonderful, wise people. We're people of our times. But they change. I always, these people, when I hear, they say, "Oh, if I would have lived in the 1700s, I would have been against slavery." Maybe you would have. Chances are, even if you were, it wouldn't have been a big thing for you in the 1500s. In fact, do you know in Spain, and I can tell you this from my experience, you know, uh, from the history of this town, that there was a Spanish missionary, that one of the reasons he wanted to bring African slaves to the Caribbean and the Spanish colonies is because they felt compassionate towards the indigenous people, and they didn't want to use the indigenous people for those purposes, so they brought the African slaves. Now, back then, that was considered very compassionate. Nowadays, we think it's equally horrible on both sides, right? But again, the point is being, you have to take the best. There are things that you can admire about Christopher Columbus. I don't think he brought genocide or all sorts of these crazy things. You think that we hear from people right now on Times Square who are so concerned about anti-colonialism and all these things, that they're talking from the river to the sea, which basically is a nice way of saying, "We want to wipe out and create a genocide from the river to the sea because this land is only going to be ours, and we're not willing to share it." And that's happening right now in 2023. So, that's what I'll say about that.
Thank you. So, what's your solution for the recent proliferation of e-bikes and mopeds on the streets throughout this district and, you know, all the neighboring districts and, and everywhere? There were, how do you safely maintain a balance between drivers and bike lanes?
First of all, one thing, you need to enforce traffic laws. Wait, to a line of people, even, even, it seems so old-fashioned now. People would just ride a bike the old-fashioned way. We always have to remember, they're not pedestrians. They are people on a vehicle on the main roads. Now, a lot of them have black wings. But the other person wants to run through red lights to go on the sidewalks. Uh, and of course, they're not under touch. And a lot of the community boards who are very pro, uh, pro cyclists and pro scooters, which not necessarily they're against, but they need to be respectful of the laws as well. I mean, we even have traffic signals also for some of these bike lanes. So if it's red, they need to stop. I remember when I was in my twenties, I had a delivery person almost run over my then pregnant wife at that time. And missed her by this much. Because they're, to them, it's, it's like, "Oh, the rules don't apply to me." And a lot of this is enabled by the various community boards, who whenever one of these people unfortunately gets in an accident or loses their life, if someone points out, "Yeah, they ran through a red light, they did this, they did that." Though gas stations say, "You're wrong. We don't know what you're talking about. You have no evidence for that." We need to have them, we need to enforce laws. We need to treat them. Just like we treat a car running the red light, a bicycle, and then now, on these bike lanes, as you mentioned, it isn't just the old-fashioned bikes. Electric bikes that often go 30, 40 miles an hour. These electric scooters, there, sometimes motorcycles are going on the bike lanes as well, so they can jam their way and run through red lines. So I think it's about enforcing the So I think it's about enforcing the existing laws we have. Maybe start doing that in tickets as well.
Your closing statement?
So again, I want to thank you very much. What I see as struggle, if you're looking at a bit of a big picture, that we're seeing in New York City and a lot of other places, is not your traditional Democrat versus Republican, or even liberal versus conservative. What we're really seeing in the city is, comes really to the forefront in the last few days because of the international news. It's really a struggle between socialists, who are increasingly taking over more and more of the institutions of the Democratic Party, and really the rest of us, common sense people. And I'm talking about Republicans, conservatives, independents, and increasingly disaffected Democrats who have seen their party being hijacked by socialists such as my important Alexa Agnes, who are more concerned about this particular growth in ideology that they have than they are about their daily problems that we need to be solved, such as crime, education, quality of life. And maybe things easier for small business owners and homeowners as well. So I thank you for your time. I love you. And I can send you real great speeches. A lot of people can say, many of your whole families. But at the end of the day, it's all up to you. November seventh, it's an off-year election, because there's no governor, no mayor, no president being elected. It's just a district in year, so it's already a regular election. But we have a really good chance of making some real changes. So you need to get up. You need to get your friends out. You need to get the word out that November seventh is another day that you're just gonna say, forget about. We need to go beyond that ten, fifteen percent voter turnout. So if you want some real change, you either vote R or C, Republican, Conservative, this November seventh.
Thank you for the struggles. So, um, before we introduce our next candidate, I do want to recognize our several member, Mr. Chang. All right, let's keep looking here. So, can I, he's here?
Yeah.
And by the way, we have a few other prominent guests here tonight. I know we're, uh, New York Conservative Party Chair Jerry Bissar was here, and Richard Barsenian, our Republican chair, um, and, uh, we have a friend, Peter Robideau, who's here, former senator. So, well, let me tell you. So the, the district, the next district we're gonna talk about, we're gonna be removed, uh, here in front of, is District Forty Seven. District Forty Seven covers, uh, Necker Heights, Bay Ridge, Colonial Island, Mac Beach, and Seagate. It's a, uh, I guess, a really redrawn district. And we have, so, we invited, uh, City Council Justin Brand, who's running on Democratic Party line. Uh, Mr. Brand, uh, was invited to participate, but did not respond to our request. City Council member Artic Kagan, uh, is running on Republican Conservative line. Mr. Kagan immigrated to the United States with his family from La Russa in nineteen ninety-three. He has been in duty and graduated from Purdue College for twenty-one years. Mr. Kagan hosted a radio show reporting on immigrant rights. He is the son of Holocaust survivors and previously worked with Congress member Michael McMahon and comptrollers John Luke, Scott Strager, and Councilmember Mark Traynor. Uh, Mr. Assam, Councilmember Artic Kagan. Uh, Mr. Kagan, uh, would you like your opening statements? So, but, so just, you are here, so the opening statements are...
For what?
Oh, that's very quick. You can, I'll answer some questions, you can do a closing statement. Happy opening ceremony.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilman Artic Kagan. Twenty years I've been working in America with no English, no money, just a lot of hopes and dreams. And now I'm living my American dream. And, and New York City Council, relief is a very big honor for me. And I'm very, very grateful to this beautiful country for giving this opportunity. I host town halls in every neighborhood of my district. Currently, my Forty Seventh District is different. But I was just today, I will start this, if I will be, with God's help, with your help, on November seventh. I will start this tradition of hosting town halls in every neighborhood, including Paradise Village, West Beach. Because the first part is to listen, to listen, to go. I don't know everything. I, I, I like to hear what you have to offer. So I believe it's very important. Today in the morning, I was on a podcast with a very progressive commentator, Ben Mas. He interviewed me and Justin Brand. I knew that moderator is very, very progressive. I sent him a guest, and I agreed to debate. Doesn't matter whether it's a conservative commentator, progressive commentator. No, you have to be ready to go everywhere and to debate everybody. Otherwise, get out of the kitchen, you know? If you cannot take the heat, get out of the kitchen. Some of you already met me at parades in Bay Ridge. In fact, I'd like not to miss a single parade, a single festival, a single black parade. I've already visited several black parties in Bay Ridge. And that's of course on top of knocking doors, whether it's a tall building or a private house, because it's very good and pushing weight, and it's very healthy. Also, I, I see voters, I talk to voters. I see, I hear, and it's very, very important. And that's outside of my garden jobs near the City Council, which is also very, very demanding. So, I just came here from my borough. The houses meet monthly, weekend of the permanent associations. But it was the district in saga. I protested such a combination of dark years and my borough houses in the same district. Not because I'm afraid of my borough houses or dark years. In fact, I am ready to go anywhere. And many said that I worked for State and Island Congress at some point in my life for two years. Without being a crowd, I worked for the United States Congressman who represented State and Island. And I went bypassed to State and Island. And I used State and Island trailer road. So I'm not afraid to go anywhere, all over the world, if it's important for our community, if it's necessary to deliver for our communities. The message I convey is, the leaders result personal problem. And this is what I'm aiming for. I'm not afraid of mayor, governor, president, speaker. In fact, many of you know that I was a Democrat. And even last year, when I was a member of Democratic Conference, I still remember how all the bits and pieces came to us, told us how much money we have to spare. But I imagine you, it's not my money, it's your money, taxpayers' money. So. And after everybody said, three million here, ten million there, fifty million there, one million over there. I raised my hand, and it was busting out. And Democratic Conference, I said, like, can each one of you come up with one simple proposal? How to save taxpayers' money? What to do? Where can we see some block government, face fraud abuse? Please, let's cut, you know, like, all of this money. Someone will save taxpayers' money. And the only response I got from some of the colleagues, you sound like a Republican, guess what? I am a Republican. I'm running as a proud Republican. In, in June, this year, and many of your neighbors, I received more than seventy-five percent of Republican votes in the three-way primaries, and I'm very proud of it. And now I'm facing a world who is confident that magic of the letter G is the only magic that works in Brooklyn and anywhere else. But already last year, Democrats, not just the Republicans, not just independents, Democrats in Brooklyn, proved that magic of letter G doesn't work anymore. And the life proof is in this room right now. Assemblymen Les Chauvin, Assemblymen Alvin Gass, Assemblymen, the fight of my battle, all of them, and overwhelming the Democratic districts. Democrats, of course, can die. Because everybody, I said to them the morning, I said, like, this, why didn't you switch? Because of that, because of them. I said, every time my nineteen-year-old daughter leaving my apartment and going outside, I'm very, very, very nervous. I texted, I texted your mother all these summer nights, where are you, everything is okay? Not because I'm like, you know, such a controlling father, because I'm really afraid for her safety in the current New York City environment. While everybody's saying, oh, we have less murders, less shootings. And like, everything is going down, crime is down, we are all safe. But you know what? You can't say this once, second time. It doesn't mean anything, you know, like, I'm riding trains every day. I'm riding, uh, public transportation every day. I'm walking streets, I walk a lot. I change my shoes like every two weeks, because I walk a lot. It's also good to see what's going on around. So, people do not feel safe at all when you go to ride a pharmacy and you see two space being locked. Because they're afraid that someone will come, will break everything, will take everything, and get it away. When I came to see the second prison, police council, and police prison, and I see pictures, photos of every criminal, possible, person killed on West Beach, and I said, why don't you listen? Why don't you put them to jail? We know what they have done. No council, it's a progress exercise. We put all the pictures of people who are arrested more than, maybe, more than twenty times. If they are arrested more than twenty times, that's the pictures you can see. Doesn't matter how many times they're arrested. They will be released the next morning. And then they're asking me, why do you believe Democratic Party? I said, because, I said, they're doing everything possible to feel less safe and humble, and also just open and safe. My employer, proud, is this year. Forget about previous victims, the ones that get my PD, diaphragm, etc. But even this year, it was a pure and simple hope about public safety, to create a civil committee and to spend twenty-seven million dollars to review all cases of all inmates in Rogers Island and to release conditionally, safely, safely to the street, twenty-seven hundred of them. Why such a number? Because right now in Rogers Island, sixty-two hundred inmates, sixty-two hundred. And they're going to close Rogers and open four border-based jails, capacity twenty-five hundred. So if you have food with mess, the difference is twenty-seven hundred. They need to release them to the street. And then, bro, everything will be beautiful. Nothing will happen. Again, I have a nineteen-year-old daughter. How would she feel if she were faced with all these beautiful people who told me, right, the summer when I visited, I don't know if I do it here, my institutional rights, please release me from here? And then I checked his chap, chapter, you know, folder, you know? Two slashes outside of the jail, and two slashes to where he was in jail. Four slashes. Should we release this person tomorrow, to the, safely to the street? He's gonna do two more slashes, and then, bro. So I cannot agree, cannot disagree more. I voted against the creation of this committee, and then I voted against twenty-seven million dollars to help this committee. And Brandon voted twice, yes, and he's very proud of his work. He told me, oh, he wanted to put everybody to jail. So, that was my open statement.
Let's just talk about that, because my question will allow you elaborate a little bit. You, you have strongly wished for support through the NYPD and FDNY in helping stem the current surge of crime in Brooklyn. And you have taken issue with your opponent for not strongly supporting the NYPD and being lax on crime. I believe that's what you said. How would you help remedy the situation at the moment?
Thank you, very good question. First of all, I'm very, very proud to be endorsed by major police unions. And we still hoping for one more. It wasn't not by four, but there are five police unions. I'm still hoping that the PBA don't do the right thing and will endorse me. Because there is no choice from them in this election. It should be probably one choice. So, we can do a lot. Some people say, oh, minority, doesn't matter. Minority in city council have no voice. That is absolutely not true. First of all, it is quite a loud voice. And the more the mayor, the more members, the more louder the voice also. It's a common sense focus. So it's six Republicans, two Conservatives, Democrats, that's already eight people out of fifty-one. We already succeeded several times. Maybe you remember, last December, New York City Council voted, voted to pass legislation to cancel any background checks for prospective candidates. So you cannot check their criminal history. It wasn't committed any violent crimes. It wasn't committed any crime. You cannot check their criminal history. That was an essence of legislation. They called it give a second chance, something like this. Twenty-one was sponsors out of fifty-one. Meaning, what six Republicans, two Conservatives, Democrats can do? I can tell you what we did. First, it was letters, up ads, press conferences, rallies on the steps of city halls. Then it was a public hearing of public safety committee. We brought tons of witnesses. Tons of people came, said, come over, surrender, president of permanent associations, co-president presidents. Everybody testified against them. And then it was a huge scandal, when one guy came in favor of this legislation. He was a convicted rapist, he had twelve years old guilt. He spent some serious time in jail. He didn't want anybody to know about him. So first he voted this second chance legislation so nobody would know about him and to leave wherever he was. Let's say, George, this legislation is not a locker on a table. Nobody's talking about it anymore. Meaning, loud voice, protest, press conferences, public hearings, public barstums, nobody wants public barstums. Including my brother, and then I were pushing, but why? Because, uh, some kind of nonsense, and I'm running in Bay Ridge, one might have channeled. And then I said, but you just said that it's a serious issue. So you're in support of it? No, no, I'm not in support of it. That might, it's a good idea, because the public can't ignore. So, that's why it is possible to oppose some nonsense, to oppose some distracted legislation, to vote yes, to talk about it. And sometimes we are trapped, and that's what's actually a struggle to try to train. Also, as Councilman, I'll get to funding two police prisons, which is very important for new patrol cars, it's helpful. For new security cameras, it's helpful for public safety. Some other measures, I have like, some magic developments, and they have support security cameras. I started to check, half of them did not work. So I called a security company of my channel, for them to check all of these cameras. And all of them are working, Boston, Correa, and Mago. So as Councilman, I do have some power in terms of fighting, in terms of opposing stupid, vicious counterproductive legislation. Public is supporting NYPD and law enforcement. And to make sure that communities are safe, also it's important, I believe, to visit every prison council. And I visited every, every single police prison in my district. A roll call, you know, they do it at seven o'clock. What do you want to come? Well, back in August, it's too early. Eleven PM is too late, so no, no. I want to come at seven, at three, at eleven. I came at every police prison in my district, last year, this year, and every shift, and every roll call. Because I want to say to this police officer, who could be feeling the next minute, we are with you, we support you. We got all that. So, that's important.
It's awesome. Thank you. And let's, uh, elaborate on another one. So, the Democratic Chair, Rani Sashani, she's recently, I think, has been scared to people in, in this community in particular. She said that she was, uh, you know, she proposed the idea of opening a library shelter in Fort Hamilton. Um, and, and there's, um, uh, you know, the army base, and people that even talking about Shore Road. Uh, what do you, I, I think I know what you're saying, but how do you, how do we not allow, allow this to happen too close to our schools and close to our communities where it may be, you know, disruptive?
Thank you, very good question. The first problem is that respect for the communities, that'sification of the communities. I know that mayor doesn't want you to know whether any type of library shelter, or any type of problematic situation in your area, he doesn't want you to know what it up from. But, you know, like, whether it's convenient or inconvenient, you have to let it. you have to notify elected officials, community board. In case of Coney Island, it was like, school principal, parents. I learned about migrants being located in the school gym in Coney Island, not from Mayor's office, not from City Hall, not from the Office of Emergency Management, from concerned parents of Coney Island. And then I was told this, it's temporary. They even invented the term Temporary Processing Center, not Center, Temporary Processing Center. And I asked them, "How long is it temporary?" "Maybe two, three weeks, you know." And what will happen next, will be new migrants. This one will leave, we will process it, there will be new ones. Do you know how long they can be in this gym? For one night. Because for units in Coney Island, it's a day club. The next day, we hosted a huge rally of parents, with children, by the way. Children came with parents, and grandparents, and neighbors came. It was a huge rally protest, with a lot of TV cameras, and factories, and CNN, and you're going, long story short. The next day, three buses, four buses came, and took 83 migrants to Roosevelt Hotel. The point is, they have to notify the community to be there. It should be respect for the community. And I was told, "Well, why my point will be dim and low because I'm doing the preemptive in Bay Ridge, preemptive in your Fort Hamilton military base." "Oh, it's not happening here." "But you know, if it's not happening, you do it too late, very late." "No, we want to say now. No migrant shelters in Bay Ridge, no migrant shelters in Blacker Heights, no migrant shelters anywhere in San Antonio." There is plenty of our compassion. Like, every time I hear it, from Mayor, from Justin Brennan, from some others, you are not compassionate, you are in the of yourself. How could you do it? You can't be surrendered to just partners. They have asylum seekers for rent alive. You have no help. For the record, I volunteered for many homeless shelters in my life, volunteered. Before I was elected anywhere, I volunteered for 10 months for brother organizations, for people with disabilities, for seniors, for organizations that serve families with children. And I volunteered last year in the Superstore Sandy, and during the pandemic, and so on. But I came to America legally, I was interviewed, I was vetted, I then took background checks. They took a lot of checks, whether I have AIDS or two percoruses. And when I went for county congressional office, many, many times, immigration authorities did not allow people to go to America if they had AIDS, if they had some criminal background, if they had some problems, some issues. Right now, we have open borders policy, no questions asked, not in Canada, not in New York City. Anybody can come, just play. I'm asylum seeker from Venezuela. And could you show documents, no documents? I'm just saying, I'm from Venezuela. Why are you from Venezuela? Because I have just advanced TPS status. Nobody can put a border sign from Venezuela. How could you move? I don't have documents, so you can't carry a document. So lots of documents that you have thrown at the board. Long story short, we need to protest now, not to eliminate hackers, to show that we do not take it lightly. This is very serious issue. And we do not think, and we will let the message. They really know, we strongly disagree, and they know what to expect if they will try to do something like this. They really know. Now they are on the record. They know that this community will not tolerate such disrespect. Notification afterwards, no, no, beforehand. And again, I was asked today and before, "But what are you offering, you're just complaining? You do not offer the solution. Where are you supposed to build these migrant shelters? Or you want to put them on sidewalks?" That's not what I'm saying. There are several rules in New York City that were installed long ago for homeless New Yorkers, including right-to-shelter, like for 90 days. Including sanctuary city was proposed first time by Rudy Giuliani for a very similar reason. He wanted undocumented immigrants to shop the courts, to inform police about violent crimes, and for their children to be vaccinated before going to school. That was the only reason why he made, he approved these rules. But he never imagined, and nobody imagined, that it will be like hundreds of thousands of people who will come with no documents, no getting, no change in a fancy. And they have to be 90 days guaranteed shelter, food, mopeds, cell phones, and so on, and no questions asked. So that's why I say we have to definitely, definitely change right-to-shelter rules. We need to suspend sanctuary city status. We need to call up residents to secure our borders. And we do not need to be more and more incentives. My employer is doing this. This year, he voted for pilot cash welfare program. This year, he voted for pilot cash welfare program to incentivize even more people not to work and to come to New York City. "Oh, we have plenty of cash." But I voted against, I spoke against, I said, "Why do we need, we have already welfare program. Why do we need another pilot cash welfare pants? Why?" And the person, "Like, whose money is this? The taxpayers' money, not his money. He's not saving his house to give out his cash welfare pants." So why he saved our hard-earned money to spend on absurd programs that creates world dependency, instead of creating jobs?
Thank you. So I'm gonna ask you this too, because it's a topic that's backing up pretty much a lot of great, great areas, great parts of Brooklyn. Think like, the mopeds, the people riding recklessly on sidewalks, and adhering to the rules of the law, and getting, you know, in very close proximity to the address house. What do you, what do you stand, and what do we do?
Thank you. Right now, in City Council, there is a bill already cosponsored by the work of 20 people. It's still not enough, we need 26 to pass any legislation, but it's already going in the right direction. Brian Cospencer, Councilman Van Holbein, he's a Conservative Democrat, co-chair of the Common Sense Focus, he endorsed me in this election. And he proposed a legislation that every E-bike in New York City should have a registration number, should have insurance, should be accounted for. So if there are two specific things you just described, they have to be, they have to be accountable. We have to know, to hear, what is the number, who is paying for this, you know, insurance. Then it will be much more flexible behavior, you know, right now. One rule in New York City, anything goes, no rules. One rule, no rules. That shouldn't be like this. I said, I never said not for chaos, you know. When I came to America, the first street I saw was near the Yerba in Conhappen, near Red Street, I saw some homeless sleeping on benches in 1993, and that's my wife, also. But America is such a rich country, one's only homeless. And everybody told me, "Forget it, it's gonna be always like this." And you know, I lived in New York City when Mayor of New York City was Rudy Giuliani. And I saw the difference, what happened to Times Square, what happened to homeless districts, what happened to welfare crisis, etc. So it's all about leadership, it's all about who are our leaders. So I'm cosponsoring this E-bike registration and insurance of the station. About bicycles, basically, you cannot touch bicycles. And today, just as long as bikes, you cannot touch. Touch anything regarding bikes, it's like crazy. We have to attack only drivers, we need to do congestion pricing, as much as possible, here and there, here and there. And as much as expensive as possible, I'm talking against congestion pricing, I'm talking against new taxes on fee, or anything like we tires, you know. We discussed in City Council tires on electricity in Puerto Rico. And if I ask question, why are we discussing for so long expensive rates for electricity in Puerto Rico? And why are we discussing how to break Canadian subway monopoly in New York or in your risk, your risk Puerto Rico? I said, "What?" Asked the question, concerns of my constituents, I was living in Brooklyn, and people pay so much for electricity, sometimes the rate increases like 500% with no questions asked, "Why?" Or, that's question is racist, you know. Enters exam into Brooklyn Tech High School, math, English, logic, it's a racist exam. Question about electricity rates, when they have nothing to say, the label is their basis. You ask him too many questions, you know. I will continue to advocate for my community.
Thank you. One more question, and then the proportion becomes a power. So, Mr. Kaden, what do you say to people who say, "Well, you know, Artie knows Coney Island, CK, and your opponent, you know, he knows Blacker Heights and Bay Ridge." What would you say? What are the common issues that you can say, "Well, you know, it doesn't matter, it's, you know, Artie, it's all the same because they were facing the same issues." But can you draw?
Thank you, very good question. Yes, it does give a relief, and I live in Creighton.